All right. First, the presentation is going to include the review of the budget process, review of the 23 budget performance, the review of administrative objectives, review of the 2024 budget totals by fund, revenue and expenditure summary for 2024 for the general fund. We'll touch on our 2024 personnel. We'll go over the sewer fund and go over any unforeseen budget process. As you can see, the budget process is actually a quite lengthy process. It starts in July where the each director puts together their capital improvements planning, reviews that with Terry Hummel, the finance director. It comes to me and we review it all. Then in August, the directors put their operating budgets together. I meet with Terry and the directors, we go over the budget, the proposed budget. September, the finance department puts everything together in preparation to meet with the board in October. And in October, we have three meetings scheduled with the board, public meetings scheduled with the board this year. We use two of those three meetings. Then we proceed to tonight, November, where I present a proposed budget to the public. And then hopefully in December, at the December 14th meeting, the board will take action on that budget. So budget performance for 2023. As you can see on the slide, our tax revenue met expectations or will meet expectations where we had a few deficit items was regarding the real estate transfer tax and building permits just due to the inflation and rising of the mortgage rates. There wasn't as many transfer, real estate transfers. And building permits are down because the construction industry did slow a little. Gaming revenue, however, did exceed our budget expectations for 2024, 2023. The, it's important to note that the American Rescue Plan money earlier this year, we earmarked that money for fire and rescue YALFOR expenses. Grant funding, we had another successful year in grant funding. Expenditures, we had a few budget increases and expenditures due to the inflationary world that we're in. Recreation did have a few more events than we had in 2022. The MS four projects, we did complete the MS four project at the wastewater treatment facility. And we did so without imposing any stormwater fees. The capital improvements projects, we completed this building. We completed Davies Drive, which were two huge successes and longstanding projects. Administrative objectives. It's always been the township's goal to maintain the highest quality of services at the lowest cost for our township businesses and residents. Going into this budget year, our strategy was to build an annual budget for 2024 with a municipal tax decrease. Financial values always stay diversified and improve our revenues. Objectives is to maintain the quality of services that we provide to the public and maintain a balance of revenue and expenses. An overview of all the funds. For 2024, the general fund budget, Liquid fuels fund, which is all the gas tax. So this is fully funded by Pet through Pendon, $824,633. Subdivision Recreation Fund, $125,000. Petition Streetlight Fund, $98,500. Capital Improvements Fund, which is down from the previous year because of the completion of the big projects I just mentioned at 6.9 million. Stormwater Fund at $272,500. Sewer Fund, $12,975,567. And other funds at $3,200. The 2024 general fund budget that is presented tonight is fully balanced at $20,056,330. The expenses again, the major capital improvements were completed in 2023. And it's important to note that our gaming revenue is restricted by the Board of Supervisors to build our capital improvements fund. The next slide shows the real estate tax review of the different taxing of real estate. It's important to note that 2024, our current rate, millage rate for the township is 1.7 mils. We are proposing to reduce our millage to 1.5 mils, so point two millage decrease. Spring's Berry Township only governs this tax. The other taxes that people see are either from the county or the school district. The municipal tax is the only thing that's governed by this board and the last increase was in 2018. So as you can see on the deck, the county, the current millage rate for the county tax, real estate tax is 6.9 mils. That was increased last year. Those two taxes, the municipal tax and the county tax are billed each year in February. As everyone's aware, we have two school districts in Spring and Sperry Township, Central School District and York Suburban School District. They run on a fiscal year, 2023, 2024. Tax rate for suburban is 2.685 mils. Central York School District is 21.87 mils. Those taxes are billed in July of every year. Moving on to the general fund revenue. The general fund revenue, as I stated earlier, at $20,056,330. 66.51% of that revenue comes from various taxes. Moving on to expenses. Expenses, again, everything is balanced for this budget. The expenses, our expenses, 51.93% of our annual expenses go towards public safety. That is includes fire and police services. 2024 staffing. We are not proposing any additional staffing that is not included in the 2023, the current year budget. So no new additional positions that aren't already included in the budget for 2023. Everything included in 2023 has been included in 2024's.
Which will be a net increase in headcount from where we are currently today.
Correct. We have several vacancies. We have, actually now we only have one in community development. When we printed these off, we had two in community development recently. We just hired a person for zoning officer. We have a va- current vacancy in the administration department. We have one in parks and recreation and two in police, one is a full-time position and one is a part-time position. And we currently have one vacancy in wastewater treat. Sewer Fund. The sewer fund is an enterprise fund. The proposed budget for expenses for 2024 is $12,975,567. The proposed revenue is $9,655,100, which is a shortage of 3.3 million. The majority of that shortage is from depreciation, which is just a line item. It's not a cash value. So without depreciation, there's a shortage of $516,783. We are proposing a sewer rate increase for 2023 or 2024, I'm sorry, of $5 per quarter for both residential and business, uh, commercial accounts. So currently the residential rate is $75 a quarter. That would go to $80 a quarter. And the commercial rate is currently at $80 a quarter. It would go to $85 a quarter. The last increases were each $5 a quarter. We increased it in 2018, $5 a quarter, and we increased it for this current year. So January 1 of this year, we increased it five.
Mark, just a quick question. When I see that large level of depreciation and so forth, are we sufficiently capital reserving for the wastewater treatment plant?
We are.
Okay.
For normal projects, anything substantial, we would we'd certainly have to go out to some sort of financing.
Okay, all right. But do we generally have a capital reserve set aside?
We do.
Okay, but it's only for like something minor, not?
Well, I guess the definition of minor.
Yeah, well.
There's the shared, there's two different capital funds. There's a Spring and Sperry only fund, which is Spring and Sperry for Spring and Sperry within our borders.
Right.
Of our pipelines. Then there's a shared capital fund, which includes everything for the wastewater treatment plant and all municipalities, all contributing municipalities put towards that fund. That fund has several million dollars in it.
Okay.
I don't know the exact amount now, maybe Terry does, but.
So if we have capital reserve funds that exceed our annual depreciation, then in a sense we have money to cover that capital reserve for that year.
I guess in a sense.
Okay.
Mark, the $5 increase, generate in total dollars, how much annually?
We have a little more than 8,500 customers, so what does that, 300,000?
$20 a year times.
Eighty-five, eighty-six hundred, eighty-five hundred.
Hundred and seventy thousand.
Hundred and seventy thousand.
So on your slide, though, you're going wastewater revenue from nine one six seven to nine six five five. That's a delta of 488, is there?
There were other revenue increases that we had that we don't solely base our revenue on.
Ah, okay, like the fees for the fog.
That would be one truck, yeah, there's many different fees that we charge. But the $5 a quarter, Mr. Dvorak is already included in this number, so as.
I was just doing the mental math to eliminate the 516,000 deficit without depreciation. I put that in a little perspective, what that would mean.
As I said during our presentation in October, this for 20, when we met with the board in 2022 for this year's budget, I forget the exact number that we said that we should be at as far as an increase. And it was double digits. It was 12 of 11, something like that, a quarter. And we decided we would go with five and then an additional five this year.
So if you take your revenue of nine six five five, you back out depreciation, you're coming up with a positive cash flow or of 516, not a deficit. Okay.
I was gonna ask why there wasn't a minus sign in front of the 516.
The 516 is a positive.
Positive.
Yep.
Any other questions on the sewer phone?
I'm good.
Uh, moving on to grant funding, grant funding, we had another successful, or we continue to be successful in our grant funding. As you can see on the list, a lot of the grant funding, the bigger numbers have, those projects have been done, so we will be seeking reimbursement from the County of York and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for those funds. We still are.
Flipped.
They are flipped on the slide, yes. It's 175,000 for the County York and 836,000 for the Department of Transportation. The $3.5 million from our RACP, we still haven't heard anything yet. And from what I'm hearing, that everyone's in that same boat as far as getting their RACP funding. Um, we, in addition on that list is we will soon be requesting our final payment from York County Stormwater Consortium for the $669,000 for that MS four project. And we have two Arley projects for traffic signal improvements ongoing right now. So sometime in 2024, we will be reimbursing that or requesting that reimbursement. Potential variables on expenditures. Inflation rates, even though inflation, the last report that came out recently, the inflation has reduced or not, not increased. Um, unforeseen repairs and maintenance. That would be mostly at the wastewater treatment plant since this building's brand new and will be under warranty for the next year. We won't see anything unforeseen there. Anything catastrophic that would happen with our stormwater infrastructure or anything unfunded that the federal or state governments would impose on us. That is the presentation for today and open it up to any further questions that the board or anyone else may have.
Mark, I know I've asked this before, but could I get a understanding on page nine, the other taxes of 9.8 million? Does that include transfer tax or what is?
Now, the real estate transfer tax is the first line item. So those would be the business privilege tax, mercantile tax, those, those type of taxes.
All right, so real estate tax of three, five, four, oh, that's the real estate tax that we impose plus the transfer taxes on real estate sales?
The, the real estate transfer tax, I'm sorry, would be in that number as well, in the 9.8 million.
In the nine eight, that's what I thought. Okay, so that's transfer in there. But the real estate tax is a pure, that's where we're reducing the mills. That's what's within our control. And that three, five, four, oh, number reflects the 1.5 mils.
Correct.
And we think transfer tax is reasonably budgeted, given what we saw this year.
We, we do, we did reduce it. So 2024's real estate projection is less than what we budgeted for the current year.
Mark, when will we announce publicly the 12% tax reduction? Do we do that when it's in the proposed stage or do we wait until the board passes the budget and say?
I would feel more comfortable when the board officially passes it in December, but.
I concur.
So why are you planning on changing your mind?
No, I was, I was actually focusing on the 12% reduction.
So, yeah, that, we need to have an announcement about that, I think.
We will definitely have an announcement, but I would prefer to wait until after December 14.
And, and I agree, we should, you know, we should wait till that time, but we gotta make sure that we get this out to media outlets.
But we're gonna be prepared for press release and.
Right.
Gonna put that on a corner of the front cover of the winter newsletter so that anybody who's not paying attention will see it.
It can't go in the winter newsletter, that's already out. That's already out for production, it's not out to the public. So unfortunately, it'll, we'll put it in the spring newsletter, but it'll kind of be old news by then.
Well, they'll be paying taxes.
People would, would receive that newsletter, I believe, before their tax bills do.
That'll work. Let's put it out then.
That'll work, yeah, make sure it's in.
Not much.
With the tax bill.
But we'll definitely have it in the spring newsletter.
How, how early do you have to get that newsletter stuff in because it's not winter until December 21st?
The winter newsletter is in production now.
Good.
And for what it's worth, I'll just say that I'm in favor of, you know, if the printer wants to use larger font on the 12% decrease.
Yes.
The whole front page.
Yeah, banner, headline.
This needs to be promoted, yes.
It will.
Okay.
I'm not hearing that anybody else is doing this.
I have not heard from any of my peers at other municipalities.
Well, I asked someone, state government, that question at Davies Drive opening, and I said, how often as you travel the state here? That the answer was pretty much never.
So not to go off on a rabbit hole, but do we, we charge a franchise fee for the cable?
Yes, I think that's like $300,000 a year we get through Comcast, is that not about right? Five percent.
Five percent of their bill? Right, I, I heard that today.
It's not, it's not on every.
It's on entertainment, right?
Yeah.
It's not on internet?
No, it's just the cable service. The cord.
And the same will apply, the, the same will apply with Chantel when Chantel gets up and running, which won't be in 2024, but they have the same taxing structure as we do for Comcast.
But that also carry for like BIOS and, uh,
I don't think it carries with BIOS because they're, that's a PUC. Since it's a utility, phone says, phone.
Well, so is cable.
The BIOS isn't here.
BIOS can carry
TV.
Programming services.
The BIOS is not here right now, right?
I don't think so.
Just curious, I mean, we can, we can carry this on another point.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we were charging it and it's in the revenue stream.
Anything else?
Don't see Don's pretty face up there right now, but.
Well, he's behind the slide deck.
All right.
Any questions, Don, Bob, George?
I can see my pretty face.
Now you can. Great presentation, Mark. Good job, Terry, directors, everyone. So at this point, I'll open up the floor to public comment. Is there anyone either on Zoom or in attendance who would like to address the board concerning the budget presentation? Hey, hitting a turn, thanks everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Township Board of Supervisors meeting. So as soon as I get to my right screen here, which I just deleted. Anyway, our first item will be a pledge to the flag, please join them. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegun, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, I just deleted the tab instead of clicking on. So um, we have had no executive session since our last meeting. So at this point, I would like to open the floor to communication from citizens. If there is anyone in attendance, either in person or on Zoom, please be acknowledged. On Zoom, you can click the raise hand button to, uh, to request to speak. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to engineering reports, environmental, Diana.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have no updates to the report that was submitted. If there are any questions, I could probably answer.
Questions? Go Bob. Motion. I don't want to put you on the spot. Oh, why did I do that? Why did I do that? I was just trying to give him a hard time. I looked too comfortable over there, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Civil engineering report, John.
The only thing I, I'm gonna say is, um, on your consent agenda is payment for York Excavators, two items, G and H. Did we make, uh, late in the game, we did measured quantities. When you do a PennDOT project or a government-funded project, if it's not a lump sum, you pay by unit price. So we made, uh, adjustments based on field measure quantity. So when you get to G and H, did we?
I'll handle it.
Okay, the manager will handle that. I don't have any other.
Approving is a little more than what we're paying, so.
Okay.
We're good.
Works for me. Um, if you have any other questions on my report, I'd be glad to answer those.
Yeah, Al's service station?
Yes. So, um, as you know, Mr. Dara had a towing contract. I, I think I reported to you probably last month, we even met with Mr. Dara, um, over at Shambang Quarry. They were, they were. They were, they were trying to pile on and add, uh, Mr. Dara towing up, put a towing operation there and said, well, it doesn't fit in that zoning. So, um, in order to get a contract with the state police and Springfield Township, he needs a, a, uh, towing operation somewhere in Springfield Township, I think is the way it was explained to us. So he approached Al's, uh, gas station, the one that sells the non-ethanol oil gas, and made application to store three towed vehicles there. There's, it doesn't require any zoning relief, uh, the, the yard, hey, because Al's is a towing, is a gas service station, our ordinance is very old, if you recall, many years ago where you filled up with gas, you got your car fixed and they even towed your car. So that's how our ordinance is written, so Mr. Dara worked a, a deal out with Al's service station to operate a towing operation out of that yard. We have a couple other ones like that, there's a, um, towing operation on Market Street behind, uh, uh, an Exxon gas station there and, and, you know, they're all one entity. But that's what, that's what Mr. Dara. I believe it's just three vehicles, three, four, maybe.
It's a secured area.
It is, and, and he's required to, any, any vehicle can't be there longer than, I, I want to say 30 calendar days. If it's dismantled or, or not drivable, they gotta remove it. So what Mr. Dara told me was he was gonna tow it over to his operation over in Spring Garden Township.
The non-operational cars.
For non-functional vehicles, yes. There are, there is criteria in the zoning ordinance, and again, it's an old ordinance, and any environmental issues that he creates would be on Mr. Dara.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it.
Consent agenda items A through I. Are there any on here that we wanted to have further discussion on, or are we good?
What John was referring to is just yesterday, he gave me updated numbers for G and H. So the numbers on G and H on the agenda are incorrect, but it's only slightly incorrect and you're approving more than what the total of the two are. So I don't think it's a big deal. Um, I didn't adjust the agenda because I just got these updated numbers yesterday. So what you're approving, we're only gonna pay what John has authorized yesterday to pay. What you're approving is slightly more, and when I say slightly, it's not tens of thousands of dollars, it's slightly more. So I don't see any issue at all, you're approving those two AFPs, we're gonna pay what John has approved to pay as far as quantities go, if that makes sense. And then the final, there's only gonna be one more AFP, that'll make everything whole, the final AFP. You may or may not, because it'll be based on final quantities. We're not paying them any more than what they're due. They're just, what they asked for here is slightly different after John reviewed the quantity.
Do we know what those numbers are?
Yeah, off the top of my head, if you, if we want to pull this out, I can get the actual number.
I have them in front of me.
Let's pull it out.
Yeah, let's, let's pull G and H out. Do we have a motion on the rest of these?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through F plus item I.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So payments number five and six.
I have the value that we sent over to the township, and again, this happened fairly late. The amount for G would be 339, 647, 22. The amount for H is 226, 018, $18.35, repeat, 226, 1835.
What was the first one, 339?
647, 22.
Okay, so up seven and down 15, okay, so. How about a motion on those two with the corrected amounts?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Um, bids, proposals, contracts and agreements, um, authorization for able recon, Mount Hill PA, two line sanitary pipes and manholes for 2024 Bayfield project in amount not to exceed 716,459, and they are co-star business.
Mr. Chairman, this is 20, as the agenda states, that in the 2024 budget, they, we already gave us the number. They wanted to start, they have an opening in their schedule, so they wanted to start a little earlier. So this would allow them to start earlier, but no billing will occur until 2024. And this is in the budget and under budget.
In the 2024 budget.
In the 2024 budget.
Questions, comments?
Just, I'm looking at Terry and wondering if we approve this tonight, doesn't that, don't the, aren't the orders required to include this this year? Or this year or no?
Are we an accrual operation or a cash? So by rights, that we should accrue the, the work for this year, correct? Yeah, payments won't start, but.
How have we handled this before, how have we handled this before when it's kind of like between every 10 budget trips?
We have, we've ordered equipment before in late one year that didn't come and or paid for.
And that's an asset purchase, that's a purchase to a contract.
And that, that gets paid when it's received, not when it's ordered usually, and if it's, um, if it's paid when it's ordered, it's a special arrangement.
This just wouldn't be paid until after they're completed.
Works performed in one calendar year and if we have to.
There are not gonna be progress payments along the way for the work that is, that is done.
They typically wait, this company typically waits.
So we're actually gonna be doing a receivable when the job is complete.
Correct.
We'll make sure we're accomplishing what we think we're accomplishing.
Yeah, I don't want, don't want to get stuck in a situation where we should have claimed it in, in this year's expenses.
I don't think we, because even if we won't give them the go-ahead until the Monday after Thanksgiving, because I have to get the paperwork from Danny and he's off until then. So until they get everything gathered up and mobilized, they'll probably only have a week or two of work in 2023 to begin with.
Terry's done, Terry's done.
She would tell us if we're in trouble.
I'll move to approve the 2024 Bayfield lining and manhole rehab project in amount not to exceed 716,459.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, communication from supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to tell you that I had the opportunity to spend some time with our peers, uh, at the PSAT Standing Committee this afternoon where, uh, the townships over 10,000 in population met, uh, just to discuss various issues. A few interesting takeaways, perhaps one of the neatest things that I heard about is that some of our peers operate a student representative program, and as a township with two school districts, what they do is they go out to the school district and try to encourage people, uh, students in the high school ranks to participate and on their various committees and so forth, and even have them sit with the supervisors at meetings and make a report, gives an update on what's going on in the school at, you know, the township meetings. And some of these are more rural, but again, they're rural locales, but they're of our size, over 10,000 in population. So I thought that was one interesting thing. Another interesting thing is there is some legislation introduced in the House to, and these are my words, based on what I interpreted, to impose affordable housing rules and zoning on all municipalities, which is, uh, the indications are this is not a non-starter in terms of it getting done, but just something that PSAT is watching, uh, and, but, because that would kind of take away our authority in terms of making our own zoning and so forth, so there's a lot of interesting things on that.
PSAT's opposing it.
Uh, yes, yes, they are opposing it, uh, because it'll take away our sovereignty, so that was one other interesting thing. Uh, and the third little takeaway was, and I don't think that we have this challenge, but there was one township that had a kind of like a obsolete retail center, um, that was probably not as good standing as anything that we have here, but the story was that the developer kind of did it in pieces, and finally the township, you know what? Properties over a certain size, you need a master plan. You can't just come in and do one thing this year and, and come in and do another thing, because there was no strategic plan for the overall plan. So I thought that was an interesting thing, but, so.
Thank you, you got the real site?
I was not thinking that in particular, but I just thought it was, you know, that there might be, we have a big, mainly I was thinking Harley, but that seems to have redeveloped on its own accord.
Yeah, doesn't seem to be a problem.
But yeah.
Anybody else? Did we discuss the, the, um, the meeting of townships and that?
We have not?
Yeah, so we want to talk about that.
So.
Addition to franchise tax, since we kind of brought it up at the, in the budget presentation?
Sure, we, uh, and any of the supervisors who were in attendance at that time, at the, um, York County Association meeting held a couple of weeks ago, the there was a resolution presented to all the members in attendance that essentially would try to extend the franchise fee that is, uh, charged on cable services to streaming services. And the outcome of the conversation was essentially was tabled, because there was not enough details in that. One of the pressures is that as people cut the cord, uh, and give up cable, the franchise fees are starting to erode as a revenue source long-term. So that's something that, you know, every township that relies on those franchise fees may want to keep an eye on. But the proposal at hand was not thoroughly thought out, and there is some legal issues with regard to how do you actually charge a streaming service? A similar level of a franchise fee. So, and so nothing came of that beyond this at this point, because it was tabled. Uh, there was some talk about, again, at PSAT today, the erosion of franchise fees as a revenue source for townships as people continue to cut the cord, so, but there was no talk about anything, any replacement or alternatives.
Forgot to say who pulled the pin on the hand grenade.
Um, I will leave the chairman to take that credit.
Yes, I had some fun, Charlie.
Yes.
Um, solicitor's report.
Uh, I have nothing to add to my written report.
Hey, anybody? Managers report, Mark?
I have nothing to add to my written report, but gladly answer any questions.
Just I have a quick, quick question, just, uh, have we had any positive feedback to Davy's Drive opening from any of our residents?
I have not fielded any one-on-one conversations. Um, I was out there today, and I don't know why the person did, but wound the wind down, because they wouldn't have known who I was and said, this, this is great, but.
That was me.
Another car tried to hit me, so maybe that.
No, that one was me.
But I've used it several times since it's been open.
I think right after it was opened and as soon as the fire truck went across, there were a dozen cars that went through there.
Exactly, yeah.
Actually, I did have, um, some feedback from, uh, one of our resident, well, not actually one of our residents, Helum Township President, uh, that I was out delivering sandwiches for the York County Heritage Center, uh, and he said, it's fabulous that you did this, it's been a long time coming, but it's great. It's gonna really relieve a lot of traffic up in that area.
So, nothing else, Mark?
Nothing else.
All right, so one of the things you had in your report is up next. Authorization advertise ordinance to establish 35 mile per hour speed limit on Davy's Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the speed limit is currently not, an official speed limit is currently not established for Davy's Drive, even though the signs are posted already for 35 miles an hour. Um, in cooperation with Township Engineer and Police Chief King, we decided that 35 mile an hour is the appropriate, in our opinion, is the appropriate speed limit for that roadway. Currently Concord Road's 35 miles an hour, and as is East Market Street. I suggest approval of advertising for that speed limit.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize Township Manager to advertise the ordinance. Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize township manager to advertise the ordinance establishing the speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour on Davy's Drive.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Old business, anything that we want to discuss here? New business, authorization advertised twenty twenty-four proposed budget.
I'll move to authorize advertising the twenty twenty-four budget as proposed.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want that extra large print?
Time for the reorg meeting on January second, six PM?
Works.
All right. Dates and times for the regular meetings, I have one proposal to change March twenty-eighth to March twenty-seventh. That gets us off of Holy Thursday. Any problem with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, everything else is good then. Um, dates and times for budget work sessions, uh three dates in October next year. Are those uh Monday, Monday, and then Wednesday of the?
Yes, sir.
Problem with that? Okay. Good, Charles?
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.